To get that done.
Who is the vice?
Um, say the names.
Is it Ryan or?
No.
Marcus Love, Mary Tyler?
That's it, Marcus Love is the vice chairman.
Okay.
It was coming. Marcus Love is the vice chairman, so he would then organize the next meeting. Uh, and we'll try to include those that are on the list and those that were rolled off the list to make sure we got a good consensus of those people who need to be replaced. So even though there's people whose name are still active, we gotta be reassured that they still wanna serve.
So Mayor Conger is going to still serve?
No, he is not. He's just gonna make sure that the vice chair gets it going again.
And then he'll resign.
He'll resign. So we have to convene a meeting for those who wanna resign to resign.
Sure.
So at that point, once a meeting is convened, then he can formally resign.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. If you can make, uh, Jackson County School System Student Volunteer Rewards. Please come around.
The information is gonna be given to the principals in March. The board will be presenting the names and approve who they want to select for to represent our school system, and I'll turn them into T S P A.
Uh, maybe any days.
So we'll pick one, we pick one student and one teacher, or one volunteer, one volunteer.
You did that. It was out last year.
Okay. Yeah.
Madison County? Okay, maybe any days, um, actually. The work session is gonna be on the eleventh.
Oh, we're moving it?
Uh, the question was, when did we change it? That's what. So actually, we, uh, we got scheduled for the fourth.
Fourth?
Which is with early, early, uh.
I think it was because.
Because of graduations?
Because of graduations, I think.
So, uh, work session will be the fourth, uh, it visions on the fifth, and it will be on the sixth.
Yes. And? Yeah.
What's the teacher of the year, uh, banquet? It's scheduled for May?
Twenty second.
Twenty second, yeah. We have one graduation day change, right? There's no sign?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Then, uh, next, uh, Daniel Royal.
I left my notebook at home, but I think I can basically remember, but I was trying to see if there was anyone through SMS here this evening.
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay.
Initial, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, if you wanna start?
No, 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 I'm sorry, no.
Okay, um, you know, I got several calls, and I think some other board members did too, or either concerns addressing, uh, the properties at the school not being taken properly care of. But one of the things first I wanna discuss is because of the pay. Um, we had some employees call to say that they were not getting their pay on time, and that was one particular issue, and, uh, they wanted to know why, you know, their money was being held up when they weren't actually doing the work, okay? That's one concern. The second concern, as you've heard, you know, this evening, someone had dressed, the properties not having, uh, the necessary materials, you know, in each of school, okay? Just not only the toiletries, you know, but some other things, uh, too, that was supposed to be supplied by, you know, SMS janitorial service. Um, also, there was concerns about, um, staff not coming in to work. And when they did not come in to work, there was no backup, you know, there in order for, uh, some of the schools to be cleaned properly and properly taken care of. And so, um, you know, my concern is this, is that, you know, contract was made, you know, and, uh, in every effort, I, I know you tried to do basically, you know, what you need to do in order to properly take care of these particular schools, but, you know, I just wanna hear from you what has happened to cause these issues at this time.
Okay, uh, with pay was a one-time off pay. We were transitioning to a new payroll system, and this only affected employees that were on pay cards. It was about maybe fifteen employees. They still didn't get paid on time, but by the time we realized we were falling with it, we had to write manual checks, and we rushed those through to Jackson. So they did get paid on time, as opposed to maybe getting your money by Thursday midnight, Friday morning. They still got paid on Friday, might have been maybe late in the day, around maybe three thirty or something, so they still get that. Um, supplies and chemicals, all of our school systems do have, uh, chemical dispensing system that we partner up with, uh, Spartan Chemicals and American Paper. So every single school location do have chemicals, uh, dispensing system that we use. Uh, most of those chemicals systems, depending on the usage, should last between two weeks to a month. And based off my inspection that have been in the locations, we do have those chemicals. So there might be some locations that maybe run off, they ran off, and we were not allowed it to eat by our employees, so by the time we tried to rush in, maybe they didn't have anything there, but it's not a systemic problem across the board. Um, the supplies in the building, we do have supplies. Uh, we partner up with American Paper from Memphis, and they do daily deliveries. Um, I also have one location, North Parkway, um, uh, Parkview line instead, that I do have stash house that I, you know, have when, that basically is paper towels. So in my DC purpose is that, you know, should we get a call that something is running low, and they turn around time from the vendor delivering something to that partic- or any particular location, uh, they cannot get to that location, where I can pull up a truck and load up and rush the supplies to, uh, whichever location that we need. And Jimmy, uh, one of our, uh, he, he's partnering with us, and I, I know some of the locations that you guys spoke to, uh, I've been consulting him, and he said that they did have supplies in those locations. So, yeah, we'll have one of us here and there sometime because of lack of communication, maybe the individuals cleaning the section did not allow somebody, but I don't think it's systemic across the board that we're not having supplies in the building.
Well, you know, this is what I heard, and, um, I think Mr. Mann had given, uh, thought and talked to me as well, that it was at several schools, and we had concerns with teachers and the principal saying the buildings are not being cleaned, you know, properly, and, um, you know, it, it was not only me that they really had, uh, informed, you know, but they had informed other board members as well, and Mr. Merweather, I think you wanna speak to it?
Yeah, but I, I got several calls and, and, and have several pictures on the phone, and I'll, I'll tell you if I'm correct, I think the manager reflected. I voted for the company. I made the motion, and the other board members, we put trust into you guys. But there are photos on their line, and, and I can't prove this, but I'm convinced that when we shut down those schools, that it was shut down because of the fact that those kids did not have paper towels, uh, tissue to wipe their hands, and they, they went back to the classroom and they spread it. But then, when I'm looking to see where we're coming in, and we're scrubbing down, and we got suits on and all that stuff, we could have prevented it. I know that other counties around shut down because of that too. Madison County shouldn't have had them shut down if we had those sanitizer and, uh, uh, equipment. So something's gotta be done, this is, this is serious.
And we've made those extra measures, you know, uh, we have some, uh, what's it called, bombs that you wouldn't spray, you light it out, you know, spray the room. We've, we've brought several cases that, that we have right now as we speak. Uh, we have an electrostatic gun that we use as well, that you can cover so many, uh, you can cover so much square, square footage instead of having to wipe everything aside. It's, it's laborious, it's time consuming, the spray gun, you can cover so much, uh, so much square footage just by walking around. So we've taken some, uh, some measures to try and alleviate the sickness, and I think Jimmy as well in his location, that they're doing that as well.
Well, I, I'm a parent of four children in our school system. My three younger daughters all go to one school, and we were having a conversation on Friday at lunch because they were out of school because the school shut down for sickness. And I said, "Girls, make sure you're washing your hands," you know, and they said, "Mama, we don't have paper towels and soap in the bathroom." And I can attest to that because I walk through the hall of that school at least once a week, and I have to get my hand sanitizer out of my purse or go to a teacher's classroom to be able to clean my hands.
We do have some, um, paper towel dispensers, um, that, um, sometimes kids vandalize, they'll knock them off the walls, and we're replacing those.
I can assure you, at my daughter's school, it's not that way. It's just, there's no supplies. So, I'm, I'm hearing what my, my, my friends across from me are saying, um, because I've received complaints from teachers, other parents, and my own children. Um, my girls have started keeping hand sanitizers in their lockers, so when they leave the restroom, they stop by their locker, they clean their hands that way. As their mama, I would rather them wash their hands with soap, but if there's no soap, I guess I'll have to just start sending them to school with bottles of soap.
No, ma'am, uh, we do have those, like I said, we, we're replacing those dispensers in there. The ones that are broken, I, I can show you invoices that, you know, from our bed of the dis- dispensers that we are buying that we installed in the school. Some of them get knocked off the walls, some of them sometimes break because of usage, but as soon as we find out what location do have broken dispensers, we replace those too as well.
Sure.
So, uh, it's a work in progress. I'm sure there's room for improvement on our behalf, and we'll keep on striving as hard as we can and take extra measures to make sure that we try to rectify those issues that we have.
Okay, question.
Yes.
Normally, once the building is clean, school is clean, there should be a supervisor or somebody to walk through that school to make sure that the work has been properly done. Do you have that in place? Okay?
In each school, and in high school, there's a supervisor, and each high school.
Okay, well, why is it, you know, if you had it in place, then none of this would have been apparent, you know? I'm the only one, I'm the only board member that didn't vote for you. It wasn't just because I didn't like you or anything like that, you know? I just thought that we quickly made an agreement and then do proper research, you, you know, and you could have been still the main one picked, you know, but I, I'm just saying that there is a concern, definitely, and, uh...
And we're working in post conjunction with administrators of the building, so, you know, we do work the buildings, we give our, you know, surveys to the principals and try and figure out, okay, what are you seeing, to get that feedback. So, you know, we might sometimes not be able to see some stuff the way they see it, and we're trying to get that feedback from them, so that they're like, it's okay, you know, we habitually maybe get a problem of this particular section of the school, or this is what I'm seeing consistently. And when we have that, we try to follow up and rectify those, and do follow-ups with them as well, and say, okay, you know, the past one week, we've been doing A, B, and C, and D, um, have you seen a remarkable change in what we're doing, and if it's not right, then, you know, we re-tweak it and do something different until we get it right. So we're working in post conjunction, principals and designated school administrators that we report to in the buildings, to try and work together, so we can see what they see too as well.
The superintendent Washington, my, you know, just concern is this, just as they are doing, they're part of, somebody looking through the building, you know, uh, we need to tell the principals to, uh, make, reply to you if they see something in the morning, 'cause you're supposed to clean what? How many, how many days do you clean this school? Is it every day, or?
It's day, it's day.
Every day, okay. So, you know, none of this should be apparent. So something is going on, so...
Well, we have a principal's meeting tomorrow, and I can ask them to reporting deficiencies that they see, and we can follow them directly to, uh, liaison with CMS, so he can talk to his supervisor. I can bring in at the principal's meeting tomorrow. I can do that.
Yeah, question for Jackson, what's happening? Ray, you might give a quick update on the tenure plan, or are you gonna do that?
Yeah, well, what we have is, uh, we, um, gave you, um, a spreadsheet of the schools, um, and the capital plans we have over the next three or four years for each school. Um, and so with that, that's the document that we gave to the county, as they requested it, and we continue to update it. So right now, we're going through principal requests for capital needs, so this may even change a little bit, um, as we start to go through and talk to every principal in every school over the next month, make sure we're meeting their needs, or at least have a timeline to satisfy things that they've identified. So, um, it's a working document. You also, over the weekend, received a list from me based on the budget committee of all those things we've done over the past three years. So we outlined all the projects, the major products that were done over the last three years, and also projected out now the next three to four years' projects we plan to do, um, with capital dollars as they're allocated. So depending on how much we give, depends on what we get done, and, uh, we just keep striving to get better and better with our facilities. We know where we are, and we know where we wanna be, and we just keep working at it.
These dollar amounts, are these from the original T L M report, where we've had some issues about, like?
Well, some are higher, some are lower, yes ma'am. So we started off with that, but then, once again, we continue to make adjustments. As we get closer to the project, we start to get bids and quotes at that time.
Sure.
And, uh, and we work through.
So this is kinda how we'll be looking forward for our budget, like, I'm just looking at the first page, and intercom at Alexander next year.
Yeah, so we have a better quote on that because we had replaced the intercom at a different school. So we've got experience with that.
Okay. So that's been taken into consideration, because we've had issues in the last year or so. Well, T L M said it was gonna cost this, but when we actually got around to doing it a year and a half later, the cost was up.
Sometimes the scope changed. Sometimes it was more in disrepair than we anticipated.
Sure, sure, sure.
So you have time, and once you get into it, sometimes it does require more than anticipated. But there are some things that we have experienced with, that we've replaced, that we can, uh, get better estimates now.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Ray, when you, when you came in your role as operations, did you, did you, did you, have you ever seen anything like this with a schedule of what had been done and a plan that had been put in place?
Well, Alan and I have been working on that. Primarily thank Alan for all of this.
Yeah.
I'm not taking any credit. So I talked to Alan, Alan gives me information, we talk about it, we prioritize together. Holly keeps us in line with our budget amendments, make sure we're doing everything and procurement properly. So we constantly have this discussion. Matter of fact, we had some of it today. But at the same time, it's a working document on all these things, and we take into consideration that the principals see as priorities also.
Well, yeah, my, my point is, I, I just, I'm commending both of you for this, um, because, yeah, we're talking about spending, or the county and the city are talking about spending a lot of money for a lot of new schools, uh, but this is gonna prevent us from being in the same position twenty years from now. And, uh, I think that's a, that's a good use of our taxpayer dollars for something like this, just to be prepared. Everything costs money, but have your hands, sitting on your hands for twenty years just didn't work that last time, and I, I think we're avoiding that this time, so. I love this kinda stuff. Appreciate you doing it.
Quick, quick, so, so Ray, the capital costs that associated with the two D projects, you have shared these with the county commission?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, well, primarily the budget chairman of the county commission, so, uh, they haven't elevated to that point until we actually requested, but we, I'll be meeting with him again soon, where we'll talk about all these things and, um, you know, put them in buckets and just see how we can work through it.
They'd be in FY twenty-one.
Right.
Yeah.
So, you know, so we've done that before. I, I think that's what started the county commission, asking all the departments to do this, I'm not gonna say that. But we were doing this all along with them, showing them what we needed, showing the dollar amounts, and showing them after we did it what we accomplished. All right?
Hey, thank you, Ms. Washington. You got the, uh, meeting reports?
Okay, um, the long way planning committee, um, would like, uh, for the following information to be added to the strategic plan. Not, this is not to change this strategic plan, but just, uh, to, uh, make an addition or, and to try and enhance some of the things that we are already doing. If you have your, uh, strategic plan, if you would look on, uh, page six. Page six, goal one, uh, school climate and culture, improve, uh, teacher. We added recruitment, but that's the only word that was added. It was, it read, uh, improve teacher retention and attendance number, and the added was recruitment, recruitment, retention, retention and attendance number. On page seven, under the climate and culture statement, we added number four, create opportunities for board members to build trust and team building. On page nine, goal three, early foundations, implementation of pre-K curriculum, and we added and classroom curriculum. Uh, delete, uh, at middle schools and add in all grade, oh, da, 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 da. I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself, um. Page ten, goal four, uh, workforce development implementation of the project Lead the Way STEM. It was for middle school, but, uh, they add on in all grade levels. So delete middle school and just in all grade levels. Page thirteen, goal seven, which is operational, we add create a plan to develop school safety personnel. So, um, we're looking to, hopefully, to, uh, be able to develop our own safety personnel, which will improve, uh, the behaviors and climate and safety of our students. And the page fourteen, critical areas in need of improvement, and, uh, that was added on board relations.
Question, is that board relations with each other, with the superintendent? What, 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 what was intended there?
Board relation, uh, with superintendent.
Superintendent, okay.
Yeah.
Number pay fourteen?
Yeah.
Jump back to page thirteen, that, that needs to be personnel, not personal.
Not personal, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I thought I said personnel, but.
You did say.
But it was personal.
No, you said it, Ray.
Okay.
Um, I had a question about page ten, goal number four, workforce development. Implementation of Project Lead the Way STEM curriculum. We're gonna delete middle schools, and we're gonna have it in all grade levels?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I thought, Dr. Mark will help me. Do we have curriculum for all grade levels? And that isn't Project Lead the Way specifically for middle school students?
We only have it in middle school right now. Uh, we have a different, um...
Career exploration.
Virtual job shadowing software in elementary schools right now, so if you guys want to see it expanded, it's a great program.
Right, and that's, that's what we send, yeah, and this is for the future, yeah.
So we can talk about that. There's just a pretty significant financial cost for each teacher to get trained, so we'll need to kind of plan that out.
So, I don't, I don't know, maybe we should just say Project Lead the Way. What's the name of that other?
Uh, virtual job shadow.
Yeah, should we add that in there, instead of it just being Project Lead the Way?
We can.
I can make one, like, tiny recommendation. I think using words like career exploration and STEM, so we're not tied to specific... Because we might decide next year that virtual job shadow, that we're not getting everything out of, we wanna use something else that's even better. And then we'll have to revise the strategic plan, so we may oughta consider using phrases like career exploration, STEM activities, et cetera, but that's, that's y'all's decision.
Okay, I can, I can, um, take that suggestion and look at it, but, yeah.
So how, so how does that, uh, read now?
Okay, uh, again, say, tell me what you said.
I think if you guys use phrases like expanding career inspiration and STEM educational activities to all grade levels, I think that would...
That would, yeah, okay.
That's my two cents.
Okay, yeah. The other thing, uh?
Yeah, we, there was a budget committee recommendation to authorize the, the superintendent to spend the money to explore the track and stadium in the other location, in that new location.
Yeah.
So you have the, 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 the version, we have the detail. We have the detail.
I'm sorry.
We have the detail, with that list, all the updates for Thursday.
Yeah.
Thank you. One we discussed, um... Let's go to policy committee recommendations.
Okay, uh, the policy committee met on January the sixteenth at one thirty P M, um, there was a forum. However, prior to the sixteenth day, we had met in additions to policy. Uh, and I just wanna clear up with the policy committee member, mem- members, that, um, upon receiving an email, it stated that, um, it was, yeah, it was sent to us in regards to our meeting prior to the sixteenth meeting, which stated that we wanted to make you aware that after the meet and policy, a revision that was changed did not say for review by you at the time of the meeting and policy pertaining to policy two point four zero four, okay? Just wanted to say Janet and I talked, but it was not to be reviewed by me due to the fact that this particular policy, two point four zero four, was held open. Uh, Dr. Vivian Williams was not, uh, present, she was absent during that particular time. She had not reviewed the policy, so I held it open for her to make some necessary, uh, changes to the policy. And that particular policy was changed, so I just wanted to inform the policy committee members, it was not for review. It was supposed to be held open, okay? And once it was held open for changes, then that's when we went back to review the necessary, uh, changes Dr. Williams will, did. But, uh, we met on January the sixteenth at one thirty P M in regards to particular policies to include policy six point two zero three, school admissions, policy six point four zero five, medicines, policy six point three zero zero, code of conduct, policy five point two zero three, recommendations and foul transfers, policy two point four zero four, school support organization, policy four point five zero three, school support organization, recognition and operations, policy five point one one three, in-service and professional learning opportunities, policy six point two zero six, open enrollment in magnet schools, policy six point six zero zero, student records, policy six point seven zero two, student clubs and organizations. Are there any, uh, additional, uh, Dr. Williams, that you wanted to discuss pertaining these particular policies?
As it relates to policy, uh, policy number two point four zero four, student support organization, there was an error on number nine, something that did not, once it was tight, did not stay there. So number nine, basically, for most students, it was set any type of key as a requirement for participation in school support organization activities. That was the change on that one. And then on page, on policy, uh, six point three, uh, on code of conduct with the changes, there was one under options, there was one, uh, four percent left in there, that should have been deleted as well. And so that had been deleted, and that was on page two of seven. And then also, opportunity, just to channel that opportunity with the principal to talk more about the bus funding guidelines and the, and procedure, the level of consequences, and so that, um, that we do have that opportunity, so we'd like to present that. And the word, because there was so much repetitive, uh, like, it was really safety and violation, some of that, some of those were left off, so that was corrected as well. So, that was corrected as well.
Dr. Chan, uh, did you want to make a comment on for that particular policy, code of conduct?
Just that, um, I did have opportunity to speak to all the principals at their last principal's meeting, when nobody was there. Uh, they had opportunity to, uh, email any questions or concerns, and they all seemed to be able to, uh, they could get any responses from them.
Regards to that, this is all that the policy committee meeting, uh, had to address, and on Thursday, we will be recommending for first reading only and to waive the second.
Okay, any questions for the policy committee? Much. We call it, um, attention, uh, today, we have that, thanks to Liberty Safety and Security.
Well, I meet with the sheriff, I think, is this Wednesday is the scheduled time to go over, uh, safety and security overall. We, uh, do have SOs at Liberty, the, the ones that were there aren't there, but we have SOs at Liberty and everything's been fine. I mean, ever since, we haven't, we haven't had any, um, days where, where that was not covered. Uh, the key to the MOU is we gotta establish responsibilities of school personnel and make sure we delineate that from when we actually request for SRO assistance. That's one of the biggest things that we gotta make sure that we're clear on both sides. So, as I meet the sheriff, we'll make sure we do that. We'll review the MOU by the way he views it versus the way we view it, and come to some resolution. Um, Attorney, uh, Thomas will be with us, um, at that time as we go through that. We've made some adjustments to the, uh, revisions he sent, so we've been back and forth a little bit. But at some point, we'll get to a point where we have a new MOU established, and also, we'll have new procedures within our schools as to how we address SOs and when we do ask for their intervention. Because we know when we ask for their intervention, it's basically we've called the police at that point, uh, when we ask them to come in. So, they're gonna act according to the standards that they have, and, uh, we're gonna, uh, request them only when we need them. So, that's the biggest thing right now as we talk about, and that's district-wide. We have Liberty identified up there, but as a district, we have to make sure we're implementing the same standards across the board, and right now, we're not at each school. All right? So, um, that's where we are. But, you know, I, I tell you, these guys, I was on the phone with them ten o'clock last night over incident. You know, six o'clock this morning over situations, and, uh, you know, I still work very closely with them all the time over different things that occur, and the response is always there, you know, from the people that I deal with. So, it's a twenty-four seven job. We're, we're involved with students all day and all night. You know, students don't show up at home after school, first person to call is school, right? It's our fault they didn't come home. Or the guy off the bus that went somewhere. We're involved in investigations and dealing with that stuff day in and day out, and, um, they work very closely with us to help us resolve it all the time.
Mr. Chairman, I just may add on a question you emailed, Ms. Janet, about substitutes, and Dr. Green may want to chime in, but ask, uh, Mr. Barnett what, what he does, you know, when there, have several teachers out, like, I think Thursday, they're everybody's new out. Uh, of course, that's part of the reason why we closed this for now on Friday, but, uh, some combination, some teachers teach four blocks, and they're compensated for that. Uh, when they're unable to get subs, you know, sometimes the behavioral assistants or, uh, teachers have to sacrifice a playing period, which is not ideal, uh, and we've gotta figure out a way to not do that. And I think that's, some of the work that Dr. Green's doing with the retention committee is gonna be really important for that. I think Mr. Barnett being there, uh, for several years and being able to recruit properly instead of having turnover after turnover after turnover is gonna help him do that. And then just promoting the positive things that they've tried to start, ask Ms. Janet to share the newsletter that he sent out. I think elevating things like the, you know, like the dog room business they've started, the Crusader Cafe, or they could be... There's a lot of positive stuff happens. Yes, there's challenges, we gotta work on those, but that's just a long-term thing, I think.
Yeah, that, that's a, um, I think all of our concerns, first of all, safety, security of all of our schools. Uh, the other issue that, specifically Liberty, is the...
I was saying, specific to the incident that most recently happened when a parent went through the door on the other side, we've added a, uh, another locking system on that door where if you come in, you just can't automatically, uh, go into the school, into the atrium. So, uh, that has been talked about by several other administrations and never implemented. So, he requested it and we did it. So, they have to reroute some of their student traffic, but once you come into office, you're not automatically able to walk out into the actual school area anymore. So, we took that to heart and, um, implemented that. Allen's team installed, uh, that system to prevent that from occurring again.
Good. So, I think that's, uh, one of the things that will assist, uh, teachers making, and students to feel safer. Uh, this is difficult, that's why I asked a question on how we make up for, um, all the vagaries. You know, we've got seven, eight vagaries. Then, uh, absenteeism is one of the highest in history, you know, so how do we get to learning? Uh, so, first of all, I think you gotta get school safer and secure. They ain't get to learn anyway. That's, uh, and I think that's important, and I, I get that question every week, uh, asked, I get that concern every week. So, I just want to make sure that, uh, the community and parents know that we are actually doing something and working towards that. Any other questions that are related to the agenda? Superintendent, do you have, uh, superintendent, you have...
Come here real quick, man. So, I attended a, um, conference last week, um, of all the superintendents in the state, uh, primarily working tenants, and talked about a lot of legislative issues. The big topics were, uh, K through two, K through three, uh, literacy, um, and the phonetics, um, curriculum that everybody's gonna be asked to adopt. Uh, of course, we're early adopters of that and are working towards that already. Uh, but there's a list of different things that schools will get to choose from and get approved as far as early learning and early literacy. Also talked about there was the, uh, the governor's speech where, um, um, he talked about a four percent increase to instruction. Of course, for superintendents and finance directors, you cringe because we know that he only funds seventy percent of what he said, all right? And we know that, uh, statewide, there's over ten thousand positions that are not in the BEP. We have a hundred and eighty-one, and that's not atypical for, um, our district size, and that is based on a number that's less than our average salary. So, there's three things working against us. When he says that, people automatically say, well, I get a four percent raise. Well, no, he's contributing four percent to that pot of money, and then we gotta make raises from there. We gotta make it happen. But, um, that was a lot of talk about how that wording goes. It wasn't anything, everybody's happy to get more money, but how it's worded is sometimes misleading. So, a lot of discussion with, uh, Mary Andursky, uh, who's the director of finance for, uh, Department of Education, the governor himself came to speak, and we also heard from the commissioner of education. There's full bills right now and, um, on the floor regarding alternative education, getting a lot of attention, and, uh, trying to repeal what they did last year. They put an undue burden on districts regarding ten-day suspensions or less. Uh, that was a big topic of discussion and just other, um, legislative activity. Also, uh, behavior and mental health was discussed. Uh, even if we could fund it, there are not enough mental health professionals in the state to cover our schools. All right? So, mental health is a big deal, and we feel it every day. Um, and we deal with it every day, but, uh, we have to pay more attention to that because we're not only having to educate, but we gotta resolve societal issues that get resolved at school. I mean, that's a lot of what we do now. We have to resolve issues not only with the student, but with the student's family and home life that come to school with them. So, uh, a lot of discuss about that, a lot of discussion about nurses and their funding. We, um, they fund three hundred and fifty-five total nurses in the state for BEP, but we employ over fourteen hundred and ninety nurses. So, a lot of that comes from local funds. So, all those types of subjects were talked about in conjunction with the whole student, the whole educator, and all the things we need to provide for everyone in order to ensure success. But mental health was a big discussion throughout the whole conference and alternative education programs and how they're implemented. Just a brief update.
Thank you.
All right?
So, Mr. Chan, do you want to touch base on the, uh, policy to do, discipline?
This was just discipline as a particular whole, you know, what I was gonna do, save some time to get, um, with, uh, Superintendent Washington, and give us some steps that have been working for other, larger districts to include mental health, you know? And so, um, this would have offset, you know, some of the problems that we do have. Um, in discussion, um, I did, I think I discussed it with, with you concerning, um, having, uh, printouts of what each school has been faced as far as their problems and what disciplines they're having to attend to. And I think there should be a printout, uh, for each school, you know, and compel that. If nothing less, um, other districts have taken a task force upon discipline, okay? Uh, because basically, it belongs to us, and we're, we're the ones that's gonna have to, uh, take control over it. As it relates to mental health, you know, even though the school maybe involves some, but getting help for the students, you know, that belongs to the parents. And so, um, taking initiative in order to have parents to put that in place would help, uh, with some of the discipline that some of the teachers and, uh, principals are having to deal with on a daily basis. So, I'm gonna get with him and just to share these particular steps, and so, uh, we can see if we can use them here in our district in order to offset some of the problems that we're having at this particular time.
And thank you for that. There's a school discipline institute in Murfreesboro, the third and fourth, and we have several, uh, administrators signing up for that already. It's a statewide issue.
Yes, indeed.
And there's an institute, uh, two-day seminar in March, third and fourth, that we're gonna have, uh, several people from our district attending and representing, because sometimes when you're here, you think you're the only one with a problem, but when you go other places, you see, we all have these issues to different degrees and different magnitudes. Of course, we're concerned about what happens here, but, I mean, we, we're fighting, we're fighting it all over the place.
Nationally.
Every district.
Uh, schools are going to have to, uh, we're moving forward. I'm just not, you know, again, we're concerned with this district, but all schools, we are gonna have to look at hiring different kinds of personnel to be totally in the schools to, uh, help some of these people. I know that you're saying it's the parent, but, uh, we still have to deal with it.
This is just mental health, I was...
That was a whole mental health thing. We don't even have enough professionals to take care of it.
I'm talking about the health right now, but, you know, to, we have to deal with this, so we have to look at...
Yeah, absolutely.
In, in the schools, yeah.
Absolutely. I think, Dr. Williams, we already have some negative track.
We do. We have prison, we have, uh, we want to just bring some mental health personnel, and I think about partnership with the city. Pathways, let's see if we have that. So, we, we have started that process of adding some mental health.
Good, because we're just gonna have to, uh, do something differently than we've done before. And that's, yeah, that's very good.
Okay, we're done. Any suggestions, uh, to just to do items for next month? Uh, get those to Janet, uh, myself, or superintendent. Uh, is he, the information item, this list, uh, any other item, information you bring before the board for this round? Motion, John? Well, I don't need a motion, John.